Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have you take your seats. Call to order, the June 13th, 2019, regular meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission. Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ashley.
Here.
Commissioner Judge. Commissioner McGiffney.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Thank you very much. The second item is Commissioner member announcement or reports. I'll start by welcoming, obviously, our newest planning commissioner, Lawrence Skidmore. She's fantastic. I've had the pleasure of working with her for a number of years and just delighted to have her on our commission. I think she's gonna, I think she's gonna do great things, as she always does. Welcome. Anyone else? That's good. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the May 23rd, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no changes, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted in our package.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Nobody left to oppose, so the motion carries for approval of minutes. Next item on the agenda is cases withdrawn or requests for continuance. Mr. Murphy, will you cover that for us, please?
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item this evening, the staff has recommended a continuance. This is case number five, SPA 89, MAP 101, Zone Change 195, MAP 101. Our applicant is Floyd Hinesley, Robert Mahan, and Ryan Fisher, Bike Porter and Associates. The staff recommendation is to continue that project until June 27th, 2019. That completes the reading of the cases withdrawn or request for continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to continue item number five as read into the record by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
For ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Mr. Murphy, will you cover the consent agenda, please?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are items scheduled before your commission, which are being recommended for approval by staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special condition and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask any questions on the case. As of now, we have four cases on the consent calendar. I would note that the applicant has some questions that they want to discuss regarding one of the conditions for case number one, so staff is recommending case number one be pulled from the consent calendar and heard in its regular order. Case number two, this is conditional use permit number 47, MAP 165. Our applicant is James Arnold. The item before, or the project is located at 24627 Cummings Valley Road in the Tehachapi area. The request before your commission is a modification of conditional use permit 47, MAP number 165, to allow an event venue for this permit in an A district. I would note for your commission that you did receive an addendum this evening, subsequent to the distribution of the staff report. It was the determination of staff that clarification to the identified conditions of approval were necessary. The purpose of these conditions were to ensure that implementation of the project can be done in the most effective manner possible, and to ensure that access concerns raised by the California Department of Transportation have been addressed to the extent feasible by this project applicant. In summary, the conditions that were clarified, requiring the project applicant to construct a fence along the property's eastern boundary, and to move the existing gated entrance to the site's northern boundary along log homeway. It is the intent that this will reduce the possibility of any patrons illegally crossing someone else's property and exiting Highway 202 to access the project site. In addition, staff is recommending the language to allow the project applicant three years from the time of final approval to construct the required paving along log homeway. Additionally, staff included language allowing two years to activate this permit instead of one. A complete revised resolution with all these conditions have been attached to this addendum for your commission's consideration, and as of now, staff does recommend this project remain on the consent calendar. However, we have a revised recommendation. The staff recommendation would be to approve modification of conditional use permit 47, MAP number 165, subject to the original and revised conditions as recommended by staff, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. The next item on consent is conditional use permit number four, MAP 193. Our applicant is Consolidated Desert Holdings, LLC. This project's located approximately one and a half miles west of Claymine Road on the south side of Rosewood Boulevard near the California City area. The request before your commission is a modification of conditional use permit number four, MAP 193, to amend the project conditions, authorizing an increase in attendance level to 7,000 attendees, authorization to hold three additional events, and then also a private company camping retreat on the 80-acre project site located in an A district. I would note, staff is recommending approval, and if Ms. Danielle Montesabias could include the revised condition, this is condition number two, subsequent to distribution of the staff report. It was identified by staff that this one condition needed a little bit modification. Therefore, the one change to the existing conditions is shown on this overhead, and would read that this approval authorizes modification to conditional use permit to allow a total of four five-day-long annual event festivals. One festival is authorized for 7,000 attendees, while the remaining three annual events are limited to 5,000 attendees each. The request authorizes a private company camping retreat in an A district. Any additions or expansions to the approved plan may be subject to formal modification to this plan or a new conditional use permit as determined by the Director of the Planning and Natural Resources Department. So with that proposed change, staff is recommending that your commission approve the modification of conditional use permit number four, MAP number 193, subject to the original conditions, including the revisions to condition two as recommended by staff, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. And the final item on consent this evening is tract number 7310. Our applicant is Ernie Moreau by LAV Pinnacle Engineering. This project's located on the southeast corner of Hageman Road and Rudd Avenue in the western Rosedale area. There are two actions before your commission this evening. The first is approval of vesting tentative tract map, number 7310, MAP number 101. This proposes to divide a 20.11 acre site into 21 lots, ranging in size from just over 22,000 square feet to over 23,000 square feet for residential use. The project also includes a 23,200 square foot sump lot, a two-and-a-half acre drill island, and the second action is a request for waiver of signatures for mineral rights owners in accordance with Section 18.15.03OK of the Kern County Land Division Ordinance. The staff recommendation is to approve vesting tentative tract map, 7310, subject to the recommended conditions, approve the request for waiver of signatures of mineral right owners, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to remove any of these cases from the consent agenda and have those heard in their regular order? Number four. Any member of the commission like to pull either of these other cases? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no commissioner comments on this or no other action, I would make a motion to approve items one, two, and three as read into the record by staff.
So we're gonna pull number one, though, correct, correct, or no?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. So it would be items two and three at this time.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. So we have a motion to approve items two and three on the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
For ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Mr. Murphy, will you cover the appeal rights on those cases?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. Both cases two and three are final tonight and are subject to this appeal. The appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Yes, so the next item on our agenda is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record before making your presentation. Are there any such presentations this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings. We'll start with case number one. Mr. Murphy, will you go over that one, please?
Actually, Ms. Angelina Simon will be presenting that case for your commission this evening.
Fantastic.
Hello, testing. Hi. Good evening, Chairman Ashley and commissioners. The project before your commission tonight is a request to a change in zone classification from C2, general commercial, to M1 PD, light industrial, precise development combining, or a more restrictive district on 0.42 acre lot, and a change in zones classification from M1, light industrial, to M1 PD, light industrial, precise development combining, or a more restrictive district on 0.36 acre parcel, and the precise development plan to facilitate the operation of a wholly enclosed recycling center on the entire site of 0.78 acres in an M1 PD district. The proposal is located at 2405 Edison Highway in Bakersfield. The site consists of two contiguous parcels totaling approximately 0.7 acres. The site is currently developed with an 8,600 square foot warehouse with no more than 3,000 square feet of outdoor storage. The surrounding area is a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential dwellings. The parcels adjacent to the project site consist of railroad tracks and a canal to the north, vacant land to the east, an unoccupied commercial building directly to the west, and single-family dwellings to the south. The site was developed in 1984 with the warehouse building that was a by right permitted use under the zoning at that time. In 1987, the warehouse added an office. In 2012, the applicant acquired the proposed site and began operating a scrap metal recycling center without the benefit of land use approval. This was discovered in 2018 when the applicant applied for a business permit that required zoning confirmation. An application was then applied for, by the applicant, for a zone change and the precise development plan, and this department also then processed a violation hearing on December 6th where the applicant attended. Following the public testimony, the hearing officer determined the findings required by the zoning ordinance in order to authorize the continued processing of the request during the processing of the zone change and the precise development application. One of the stipulations was that the applicant could continue to operate. However, the hours of operation for this facility to be open to the public would be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM due to concerns regarding the noise generated from the delivery trucks and forklifts, and specifically a children's bus stop located at the corner of Steel Avenue and Exchange Street, less than 200 feet away from the driveway of the recycling facility. As part of your commission's consideration tonight, the applicant is proposing to process the recycled materials inside the existing 8,600 square foot warehouse and retain the less than 3,000 square foot outside recyclable material storage area. The applicant is requesting the recycle center to operate from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and would be closed on Sunday. There would be three full-time employees and one part-time employee. A vehicle weigh scale is located to the east of the warehouse. As shown on the applicant's site plan, the vehicle flow for customers dropping off recycling is one-way, entering on Edison Highway, unloading at the warehouse, and exiting on Steel Avenue. This is because the warehouse is located on the site in such a way that there is only a narrow space enough for a one-way lane. The applicant stated the business averages approximately 50 customers per day with an average of 25 heavy-duty truck trips. Staff notes that during the course of the processing of this request, surrounding property owners within 1,000 feet of the site were notified, as well as affected agencies and county departments. Staff received 13 comment letters. 10 of the comments came from neighboring residents. One neighboring resident commented that traffic had increased on Steel Avenue and was concerned about that. Staff also received nine letters in support of the project from residents who noted there were no problems with smell, noise, or danger with the recycling center. They noted the recycling center is helping to keep the neighborhood clean and improving the community by taking safety measures and being conscientious of their surroundings. Staff notes that the traffic on Steel Avenue has increased due to the constraints of the site. As mentioned earlier, the traffic flow for customers dropping off recycling is one-way, entering on Edison Highway, unloading at the warehouse, and exiting on Steel Avenue. Public Works has added a condition that Steel Avenue along the project frontage to be brought up to Type A subdivision standards. These improvements include curb, gutter, sidewalk, and this will benefit the community and the safety for pedestrians. Along with the recommended conditions of approval as part of the required development standards, staff is recommending continued operation hours from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM through 1:00 PM on Saturday, and being closed on Sunday as stipulated with the hearing officer due to the safety concerns of the nearby children's school stop. As your commission is aware, you have received an addendum this evening outlining a packet from the project applicant with nine letters of support from surrounding residents. Your commission should be advised that the letters speak primarily in favor of increasing the proposed hours of operation as proposed by the applicant. Staff continues to recommend the hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and being closed on Sunday for the proposed project. However, staff has crafted the following options in regard to the condition 6I, should your commission wish to expand the hours as requested by the applicant. The following options are as follows. So option A would be, for the condition, would be the project proponent shall be open to the public from hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and closed on Sunday. If an over-the-counter minor modification is processed revising the site circulation for ingress and egress to only come from Edison Highway, the hours of operation will change from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and closed on Sunday. Should the applicant revise this maneuvering on-site to Edison Highway only, this would reduce the safety concerns regarding the school stop for traffic along Steel, as all the traffic would be directed towards the opposite street. Option B could be, the project proponent shall be open to the public from the hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and closed on Sunday. The hours of operation will change from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and closed on Sunday subsequent to the Type A improvements along Steel Avenue being completed and proof submitted to the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department. Again, at the time that these improvements will be in place, pedestrians may be having safer passage along Steel Avenue. Your commission should be advised that any of the changes or revisions to the conditions of approval as provided by staff would not necessitate a need to re-advertise the project. With this in mind, staff is recommending your commission advise the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested, and approve the precise development plan subject to the recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Is the applicant here for the project?
Yes.
Would you like to speak, say a few words about the project?
Uh, yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Brian Morales, and my last name is M-O-R-A-L-E-S. And I would just like to say that we've been operating since 2013, and over these last six years, really, we haven't really had any imminent danger on that said bus stop located on the Exchange at Steel. And just to say too, we don't, our access is not one-way. The customers come in through Edison Highway, and they leave through Edison Highway. The only thing that goes out through Steelly is the heavy-duty trucks. Those are the only things that do come out through Steelly. But anything else, every traffic is, does flow through Edison Highway. And that being said, we've been in operation for six years, and we would like to continue to be able to operate from our normal business hours, because we have suffered a lot financially. And some of our workers have left because of reduced hours, and they went and go to other recycling centers, because we're at a great disadvantage, really. And a lot of our customers are leaving as well, so it's kind of putting us in a tough position, really. So we would really advise if you guys could really at least choose option B, and thank you for your time, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Commissioners have questions for Ms. Morales before you sit down?
I just had a question.
Yes.
I'm trying to look at this map here. It looks like the vehicles that go to Steel Avenue, do they egress off Steel Avenue, and then do they go, which way, towards Webster or toward Exchange when they?
No, customers come in through Edison Highway. They come inside.
But the trucks?
Oh, the trucks, yeah. They egress through Exchange. They go out through Exchange.
And they go back to Edison?
And go back to Edison, yes.
I guess they go to California, too, right?
Uh, yes, some do, yes.
Okay, okay. Has this, has any, I guess there's a school there, right?
There's a, yes, there's a private Christian school to the corner right there, and then there's a bus stop on the, on Exchange.
Yeah. Has there been any other issues? Have anybody made any note that there's unusual amounts of traffic or truck traffic at the school affecting the school, or any other?
Not that I've heard of, no. Affecting the school, no. Not there, nor the bus stops.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Morales. Anyone else in the audience have comments?
My name is Jesus Murillo. J-E-S-U-S-M-U-R-I-L-L-O. And I'm one of the neighbors, business in the sidebar RNA recycling. And I don't think there's any dangers to the children's going to a school bus stop. Was a former bus driver. And as you know, the Bakersfield City School District with a CHP, before they assign a bus stop, they look for any dangers at all for the children's. So in the 21 years that I've been in the business, 2350, there is one highway, I don't see any heavy traffic going on from Steel. Yeah, they go out to, from Exchange, they go to Exchange, and then turn right to California. But the bus stop pick up the kids in the morning, about 7:50, and drop the kids about around 2:50, and I never see any problem with the bus with the children's. So as a neighbor, I am polite for them to come back and have their regular hours. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murillo. Anyone else like to speak on this project?
Hello. My name is Patrick Aguirre. I live at 2414 Steel Avenue. The, right there, where they, you guys are making your decision based off the staff report. Is that true?
And for, from the staff recommendations. That's correct.
Well, under some of these, for South vacant lot, that is the church's parking plus the school, and the vacant on the west, or, I'm sorry, the east, that is my neighbors below it, you only have it marked as only one thing. So, also, their trucks, none of the big trucks go through Edison. They all go through Steel. And that's, that's the major, like, the major issue we have with them, because even in the letter, it says they have spotters that have witnessed them backing in. So why would you back in from Edison? You know what I mean? So they're backing in from Steel. They all, they come up from, I'm trying to think of the road, I'm sorry, Brundage, up Mount Vernon, and they turn on Exchange, which is the school. And the, because the church and the school are connected, and the kids go through there. They leave for lunch, like in high schools would. They get to walk out. So them saying that is like not a safety issue, I just don't understand. Also, what was it? Also, what was it? There was something, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's why, because in the, the proposed plan, they're saying they just want to enter through Edison and exit through Steel, which would be fine, it's just, they allow, last week, a car towing a burned-out trailer with no tires, making sparks on the street, and they just took it in. I mean, they could have refused them, called the cops and said, that's illegal. You can't be doing that. I don't think they did that. I'm pretty sure they just let them in and paid them. And it's like, if they're going to keep doing that kind of stuff, it's like, I can't see them all of a sudden saying, yeah, we'll just let you in through Edison because all the heavy traffic comes through Steel. And I know you've gotten letters saying that we're in favor. These letters, the vacant building to the east, they own it. They bought it. The man doesn't even live in town. He just came in to sell it to them. So to say like, he's witnessed, he bought it, they bought it, so of course he's going to write them a good letter. I'm sorry, I didn't get this gentleman's name. But I believe it's that hall. So how would he witness business hours if it's like, it's a dance hall for after-hours? That you ran out for quinceanera's dances or whatever. So it just bothers me that they can say whatever they want, have people write whatever they want. Is, that's it, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Simons, would, could you, or would you address the identification of those surrounding land uses? And we, just how that's determined? I'm assuming it means a site visit and verification?
Yes, I believe the vacant site that we are speaking, I, I'm not sure what the gentleman was speaking about to the south. That is a church with the parking lot. I believe we were referring to the corner lot being vacant. And then there are residents, as you can see, mixed in throughout the neighborhood and adjacent to the site. And we were not aware of the after-hours club that the gentleman was speaking of. We wouldn't really typically know that. We'd just kind of go by our site visits, which site, our staff did conduct two site visits and did observe trucks coming in and off of the sites from Edison and Steel. Although on this, on the site plan, it is specifically showing arrows as a one-way, and I believe that staff confirmed that through the, the, thank you, through the site plan given by the applicant that there is only a one-way. And as you can see in the aerial, it is a very narrow space and with those arrows as shown. It was surmised by staff that this is what was being proposed. We had no reason to double confirm with the applicant that this is what was intended.
And those are conditions that will be put on the approval of the project, assuming approval that would be enforceable. And if they violate those conditions, they would not be continued to allow to operate?
I do not believe we have a one-way condition. However, I believe that your commission does have the purview to add that as a condition.
Thank you, Ms. Simons.
Chairman Ashley, if I may just kind of further that response?
Of course.
Ms. Montesvias, if you could put the zone map? So this is a, you know, it's one thing to look at the context of an aerial. It's also important to look at the context of the site in relation to the underlying zone classifications. So, you know, the uniqueness of this site is all those areas to the south of Steel, while a lot of them are developed as residential homes, the property is actually designated for industrial use. In addition, the underlying general plan for this entire area is also designated for industrial type of uses. So the recycling center in and of itself is compatible with the underlying zoning. The question is, in this particular case, because a lot of those houses were established long ago, you know, that's why the single-family homes are there. And then again, the church and the development that's occurred to date. The way the condition was originally crafted, both went and went through the violation hearing and then is recommended by staff, was to try to limit the hours to when children would be in school, to when you would have the heavy trucks and everything kind of going on there. And then the areas that they were not in school, you would have less heavy trucks that would be utilizing the site. So again, that is where the condition was crafted. I do believe that staff has identified some potential options for your commission to consider. And again, I just thought it was important to make sure that we have this discussion in the context of the property in and of itself is in an area designated for industrial uses. And so it was staff's intent to try to draft the conditions in such a manner that were consistent. But again, should your commission believe that the hours should be extended, we do believe that some provisions could be made. But again, that is just wanted to provide some context into the site in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do you have any more questions or comments from the audience?
Hello, I'm Michelle Aguirre. I live at 2414 Steel Avenue. I wanted to say that I leave at, work at about 7:30 and there are trucks loaded down with things outside on the Steel Avenue entrance to the recycling center. And it happens all the time. There's no kind of sign or something on Steel that says, "We're not open till this time." And it happens so frequently because I, they're just used to going in through that way and that it's open for them. And so I feel like it is a danger for children because it's so early. And also with, that you wanted to put, or that part of the plan is putting in a sidewalk for that side. And so the trucks that are coming, that were most likely keep on coming early in the morning are going to park instead of in the dirt where their lot is. It's, they're going to be further out in the street and they don't care about who they block because those big trucks will just park wherever. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. Any further questions or comments from the audience?
We have cameras located in the backside of the cameras. And that could show that there is no heavy-duty trucks at 7:30.
Will you once again state your name for the record?
Oh, Brian Morales, M-O-R-A-L-E-S. And ever since we restricted ours, there's, at Steely, there's no, all our customers know that's through, it's through Edison. So I don't know why people are saying that there's traffic on Steely. There's, the only truck that there was going to be is our heavy-duty trucks, but no customers go through Steely, no customers. And we have video evidence too. We have cameras right there. So whenever, if you guys would like to see that yet, there's no customers coming through Steely. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's never, usually, and at 7:30 a.m. No, so I just want to let you guys know.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Aguirre, looks like you want to respond to that.
Okay, sorry, it was, it wasn't one of the big rigs, but it was maybe two days ago, I left at 7:40. And there was a truck loaded down with refrigerators, big screen TVs. I took a picture of it and it has a timestamp on my phone if you want to see that, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to question the speaker.
Mr. Aguirre, if you don't mind.
Mr. Aguirre, the, if we change the hours from nine o'clock to go to nine o'clock to four o'clock instead of eight o'clock to three o'clock, is that something that you think would resolve anything? Or do you have a recommendation of the hours, business hours?
I would like that it was, it would be nine to, what, was it three?
Nine to four. Nine to three, or nine to four, actually.
Nine to four. But at least on the Steel side, can they have some kind of notice on their gate that says not to enter this way, that this are our hours? Because people just park there, waiting for it to open.
I don't think they can put that on the street. They'd have to post that on their piece of property. Looking back over my 21 years on the commission, it becomes kind of a complicated situation. I do think that posting a sign, having the hours of operation there on the property so that truck drivers can see it and them issuing a statement to the truck drivers that they service on a daily basis, that these are our hours of operation and you're not to block the street to the area residences or the area businesses on Steel and/or Edison Highway. Because it seems like it's been a problem. I'm familiar with this property and I've come through there several times just to take a look at it. So I know what you're talking about. It does get complicated. But I mean, there are other situations within the county that we have the same problem with. It's just, sometimes the streets are just not wide enough to handle the big rigs that are coming in there, even though it's an industrial zone. So I'm thinking of changing the business hours from eight to three to nine to four, which kind of eliminates people leaving their homes and going to work on an early basis and then carrying their trucks. At nine o'clock, you're probably already gone and on your way to work. And my recommendation would be possibly have the owner there put up signs of business hours so that they can see and on their properties, on their drive-throughs, they can put a sign on their property that says, "This is the way in. This is the way out," with like red arrows or something. That might help that situation and eliminate any confusion. So those are just thoughts.
Yeah.
So is that something you think would work?
I think it would help because if they're not supposed to be open until later and these cars see it, they can leave at least and not just be there.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I guess Mr. Morales, question of you.
Yes.
Actually, I have several questions.
Yes.
If we, if we change the hours to nine a.m., would people still line up earlier? They queue up, would they still queue up earlier in the morning so the problem would not be resolved? Would it be still an issue?
Well, people, our customers, they have to make money somewhere. But the problem that we see at nine is a lot of them go to another recycling center. And we, it's the loss of business right there. That's the only trouble.
Is there any way then to just say entry only on Edison and not entry, have no entry on Steel? I mean, that would solve the problem, no entry on Steel.
Oh, absolutely, but our customers don't enter through Steel. We don't allow them to enter through Steel because we have an excavator. And that's a big liability right there. So we don't allow our customers to enter through Steel. Only the heavy-duty trucks go through Steel. And that's only heavy-duty trucks are ever going.
Well, you said no customers enter through Steel, but customers do.
No, no.
Well, somebody's entering through Steel. You just said they were.
No, 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 our big rigs, you know, those semi-trucks, they go through Steel. But all our customers go through Edison Highway.
Okay.
Because we have an excavator out back and we wouldn't allow a customer to drive through our excavator while.
So how does the big rig get into Steel? Do they drive in?
Yeah, they back in.
They back in?
They back into Steel.
Okay.
Chairman Ashley, just if you don't mind.
Please, Mr. Murphy.
Ms. Morales, so for clarification purposes for commission, who owns and operates the heavy-duty trucks that are utilized in Steel? Are those trucks that are yours? Or are they trucks that people are bringing the equipment that will be stored on your site?
No, it's a third-party contractor where we go and sell the metal. We contract a third-party trucking company and they ship it off for us.
Okay.
But we don't own none of that stuff.
All right, so technically, those are considered your customers. But when you use customers, you're talking about just the day-to-day patrons that are utilizing, the vehicles would come in through that way?
I'm using customers as in the people who bring us the metal, not where we ship off.
So the heavy-duty trucks are, you've sold the product?
Yes.
And then people are coming in to?
Only through Edison.
To pick up what you have sold and then take it to where it's going next?
Yes.
Okay, I just thought it was important for clarification for our commission.
So, so there is, so are there any of those trucks queuing up on Steel Avenue in the morning?
On the morning, not, not since that violation hearing that eliminated us. No, yeah, we never load. The earliest we could load is at nine, yeah, that's when we load usually.
Okay, so, so Steel Avenue should not be used until nine o'clock regardless of your start time. Is that correct?
That is correct. And there is sometimes customers that park on that side just waiting for us to open. They don't want to be, because Edison is a fast highway. So I do understand that there is parking right there, but that should be allowed because they're on our gate, on the side of our gate. But yeah, we don't allow that customer to go inside through Steely.
Okay, and then you said there's about 50 trucks through, going through the site per day?
Not 50, no, that's weekly, 50 customers a day, we average. But heavy-duty trucks, probably once or twice, the most.
Okay, and then how much more traffic is there on the corner of Exchange and Steel versus California and Mount Vernon?
How much flowing in?
Well, here's my, I'm looking at the school. The school is basically on the corner of California and Mount Vernon, California. Is that how complex they're in Exchange? It's a very busy street. There seems to be a lot more traffic there than on Exchange and Steel. But I don't know how much traffic goes through Exchange and Steel.
Not as much as, not as much as California.
So, so the danger to children is probably more to California than it is to Exchange Street? A blanket statement has been thrown out that there is danger to children because of the traffic.
But we've been open for six years. If there's been any actual danger, something would have, and I'm saying hopefully it never happens, but something already.
Would you say in your estimation that there's more traffic on the California and Mount Vernon area where that school is, or California and Exchange versus Exchange and Steel?
Absolutely, there's more traffic on California.
Do you, do you have any idea about how much more?
No, I wouldn't be able to give you a rough estimate, no.
Okay, are there any other warning signs or things that let people know that this is not an entrance to your property?
No, we don't have a sign, no. But our customers already know that's their due diligence because they're not supposed to, there's an excavator operating on the backside. So it's a liability for us to let them enter through the back.
Got it. So do customers come in, can they run through the entire property out the back? Or do they just generally come in and out on Edison?
Some do. If they come in a long trailer, yes, we do occasionally open up the back gate and let them go through.
It looks like to me on this site here that most of the people turn right on Steel. Is that correct?
Turn right on?
I'm looking at it, well, turn towards, turn towards Exchange.
Turn.
Is that right?
No.
They leave the property and turn towards Exchange. Are most people turning that way or do they turn the other way?
No, most people either enter from Edison or they come in from Exchange. California turning left into Exchange. They, they don't even turn into Steely. They just go straight.
Got it, but when they leave, when people leave?
They go out to Edison.
Okay, but, so the trucks, the truck traffic, does that go turn right towards?
Yes, it turns right to Edison.
Okay.
Go to Exchange and then to Exchange, to Edison.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
In your report, it says your staff has observed a steel fence enclosing the southern portion of the property, limiting noise and dust.
Would you please state your name again for the record?
I'm sorry, Patrick Aguirre.
Thank you.
I have, since we're talking about videos, I have video of them with it open, dust pouring out of the place. I have it right on me right now if you want to see it. So, and also, the big trucks come up from California, from Exchange, turn onto Steel, go in, and then leave back through Exchange in California. They don't go through Edison. So also, they allow people with forklifts, we have people with forklifts driving down the street from other shops, just like full of junk, and they honk their horn, they open up the gate and let. up the gate, and let them in. So this whole thing about just letting trucks into there, it's ludicrous, I don't know. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Chairman Ashley, I would just like to clarify a couple of things. Staff had received a detailed operational statement from the applicant, in which the applicant averages per day in, customers per day, around 50, as stated in the staff report. For heavy-duty trucks, they stated in May, the average vehicle per day was 45 heavy-duty trucks. In June of 2018, they stated 18 heavy-duty trucks, and this is an average per day, as stated in their operational statement. And in October of 2018, 22 heavy trucks per day average.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Okay, any final questions or comments? State your name for the record once again, please.
Brian Morales. And just to mention, I'm, I'm the one that wrote that report, and I forgot to put, we don't get that a day. That's, we do that, I think it was either a week or monthly, I wasn't sure, but the customers is right, but the heavy-duty trucks, we do not ship out 18 or 20 a day. That's, it's either weekly or, or, yeah, but not daily. We do not ship out more than 20, 18. I just wanted to make that, that clarification.
How many large, Chairman, how many large trucks daily?
Large trucks, but end dumps or regular roll-offs?
Either one.
Either one. End dumps, only one, and then roll-offs, it could be four or five a day.
So let's say that's only five trucks, where staff is saying 18, 45?
Oh, sorry.
I'm looking for the amount of large equipment rolling through your place.
Okay.
Okay, that's the answer I need.
Large equipment that we buy, right.
It doesn't make any difference, any kind of large equipment going through there.
Okay, it all goes through Edison. Everything's coming in through Edison, that we buy.
How many count?
Customers?
Either one.
50 a day average.
If it's a large truck, how many large trucks go through there?
But defining, I'm defining a large truck as a semi, those big, long end dumps, and end dumps. And, but for our customers, they only come in pickups and trailers.
Larger than a pickup?
Larger than a pickup?
How many?
We don't, we don't, customers don't come in larger than a pickup.
Now, how many large trucks go through your property a day?
Day, um, I was, five or four. End dumps, large trucks, that's.
Staff, that's different than what you read in your staff report.
That is correct. We, we went directly from what the applicant had written. Maybe it was unclear what the applicant had written, but it does state here, number of vehicles per day, and, and then the list. And that's what we used in, in order to evaluate the project, and that's what Public Works use also in evaluating the project, because we rely on the applicant in giving us, you know.
Consistent.
Consistent numbers. So I, I'm not sure where the inconsistency is coming from, but maybe the applicant forgot to write something else here, but we don't have any real reason to doubt an applicant until they remind us.
My thoughts are, we need a, a better verification of the traffic that moves through and into, into ingress and egress out of the piece of property, in order to make a decision on this project. The neighbors are concerned, they're concerned for the safety of the children. You don't seem to have that as an applicant, that you can give to us, when you say four or five a day, and staff has your report that you wrote to them, that has, indicates more traffic than that. So I'm looking for, what is the traffic?
Absolutely.
That's verified. And unless I hear that, it's difficult to make a proper decision.
I'm, I just want to make sure that all our heavy-duty traffic, but I'm defining heavy-duty by there's big semis, and we only get one or two a day, at the most.
Larger than a pickup?
Larger than a pickup, we do not get larger than a pickup. Our customers do not bring any, our space is.
No, I mean, people that are picking up and hauling stuff out of your property also. Any, any trucks that go, customers or anything, how many?
Okay, on, and that, how many? It all depends on the price, that all depends on the market, but it all usually.
I don't care about that, I want to count.
I'll count.
Of how many vehicles, larger than a pickup, it, come through your property, ingress and egress. How many a day?
Okay, like, let's say, I mean, like, we didn't load today, but yesterday, so there was one end dump, and let's say four, four, four flat beds, that were.
Well then, is your report to staff wrong?
Only, I'm, I'm questioning, because we did that like a year ago, that was, that was a couple of months ago, that we did that. And now I'm questioning, because it says daily, but I don't know if it was meant to be weekly or nightly.
Well, we're concerned about ingress and egress out into public roads. We're concerned about the safety of the schoolchildren that are there. We're concerned about the neighbors that are there and the noise that's created. We're concerned about the truck traffic coming in. So you can see the things that we're looking at in order to make a proper decision. So I need that verified somehow. If we have to continue this case until we can get a proper verification of counts of traffic and safety issues, then I'm not willing to vote on the project. I'm willing to vote to continue the project until candidate can give us a better clarification. I would run back to staff and say, "Staff, what would be your recommendation on this now that you've heard testimony?"
Commissioner Sprague through the chair. When you close public testimony, I have some thoughts to offer your commission for your consideration, but I reserve to wait until public testimony has been closed.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just, I, I think there's a question about the queuing into the whichever side they go in or out of. It sounds like they queue up on Steel, but they also queue up on Edison. I'd like to know what the wait time is. I'm not really in favor of starting a workday nine o'clock. I think that's kind of absurd for most industrial use, and that is industrial zone property, and right, wrong, and different, we do have mixed use. But for industrial property, we, you know, I, to me, seven o'clock would be considered normal for something like this, so I, I, I don't know if nine o'clock's realistic for industrial facility, but I, but I do want to see the traffic, like Commissioner Sprague said about the queuing up, which way they're going, where are they, where are they staging themselves? You know, the tra, to me, if you're open earlier, you'd have less of a problem than more, because things would move through there and you wouldn't be sitting there. So I understand the argument, but I said, actually, opening later could be worse, because you could have trucks there for an hour. So I, I don't agree that that's necessarily the answer, but I do, I do want to know how much queuing up there is, and how much traffic there is when they open, because that seems to be a very busy time. And to me, that makes the most sense to look at. Rather, and like I said, push the start date back, it could be detrimental, the way I look at it.
So maybe we should go eight to four then, something like that?
Or seven. I mean, I'm saying there'd be less traffic, they start up with more traffic than they end up with, it seems like. So most industrial things, we start at seven most days, so.
But if they, if they congest the road.
Absolutely, well, I mean.
Early in the morning, it's congestion for the residences.
But I think congestion starts with the queuing, that's what I'm thinking. It's not from the traffic itself, the queuing up. That's what I'm seeing from the testimony here, so, that's just my point.
I got it.
Thank you, Commissioner McGiffey. Mr. Murphy? Chairman Ashley, I do, but I believe I have a potential solution. Okay. Once public testimony is closed. Sounds good.
I have no comment.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Okay, so we're going to close the public comment, now we're hearing the same stuff over and over. I'd love to hear what Mr. Murphy has to say about this. Chairman Ashley, so there's a couple of different things that have come to light as part of the public testimony. One, I believe there was a difference of opinion in terms of what a customer is versus what a contracted third-party party is that will come to the site to pick up the materials. I do believe that there is a concern in terms of just market demand, how much material do they have on site? I do believe that that helps dictate how many loads may or may not leave on any one particular day, as the site is limited to only 3,000, less than 3,000 tons of material as it is. Should it be your commission's desire, there is a possibility that we could craft a condition that allows them to open earlier, allows the facility to open earlier off of Edison Highway. Someone wants to come in and drop something off, or things along those lines, you can change the hours earlier, and then staff can use and include conditions that specifies that no ingress or egress to the facility can come between, they're limited to certain hours off of Steel Avenue. Therefore, the facility itself could be opened earlier, provided people are using Edison. However, the condition could be written in such a manner that you can't open up your back gate until 10 o'clock, till nine o'clock, whatever it is. And then therefore, if you have someone and you're scheduling a delivery to come pick up, they just don't come until later, but the facility in and of itself, to someone with a pickup truck, someone that's coming to their facility can open earlier, we just really restrict the hours that the gate can be opened off Steel, which would, in and of itself, help to reduce the number of trucks that would utilize that, if, if that was your commission's desire. That is one possibility to crafting a condition that was written in, in something along those lines. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Sprague?
So, Mr. Murphy, could we also include in the condition that the hours should be from eight to four, and that the, the operator of the site posts the hours at both entrances, as well as put some arrows directing customers, as well as vendors or trucks picking up material to haul it out of there, so they've got a better understanding of how the traffic flows and what the hours of operation are, from where they're coming in and coming out? Is that difficult to craft? Or should we continue it and then get it at a later hearing?
Commissioner Sprague through the chair. Let me read something, and then your commission can tell me how close I am, and whether or not a continuance is needed, or we work on this language. So if you look at option B, that is in your addendum staff report, the condition could read something along the lines, "The project proponent shall be open to the public from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, and closed on Sunday. Use of Steel Avenue for any ingress or egresses purposes shall be limited, shall be strictly limited to the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on days open to the public." Subsequent to type A improvements along Steel Avenue being completed and proof submitted to the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, a sign shall be placed along the gate located on Steel Avenue, indicating the hours of operation.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, my question, Mr. Murphy, quickly, just, can we get clarification in the permit as just as to what exactly comes in and out of there, as far as the number of vehicles? It sounds very vague and not exact.
Commissioner McGiffey through the chair. If it is your intent to have a little more detail specifically on the daily amount, you know, we can talk to the project applicant and request him to give us for the past year, what of your number of this? We can do that, and if it is your intent to have more additional information on that, I would recommend a continuance for a couple of weeks, so that we could talk to the applicant and get a better understanding of what they did last year. And the only reason I would note is, it does probably change based on the hours that they're open, and the price of the material, and, and it is a little bit market-driven, sensitive. So if it is your commission's desire to have a little more information related to the total number of heavy-duty trucks that would utilize Steel, I would recommend at least a two-week continuance, so that we could confirm that, and then come back with a condition that reads some of what I read with that other information.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move continuance. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for continuance for two weeks. Mr. Murphy, is that correct? Chairman Ashley, I would at least recommend a month, because the staff reports are generally due approximately, we're working on those, so to give us time. I'm assuming this continuance includes direction of staff to work with the project applicant to get a better idea of the total amount of vehicles entering, both from Edison and then also from Steel Avenue.
Yeah, we just had incorrect information, and we're back and forth on this a number of times, so I think we need to clarify that, so it's clear to everyone what's happening.
Okay. Chairman Ashley, then staff would recommend, based on that information, that your commission continue this project until the July 25th would be, is that? Do we have a meeting on the 11th or the 25th? Seventeenth. Okay. I would recommend that continues until July 25th. So we have a motion and a second for continuance. You've given us the date of July 27th or 25th. Please cast your votes.
For our absent motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to move on to case number four, I believe, that was asked to be pulled from the consent agenda. Mr. Murphy, will, will you cover that project for us, please? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Simon will provide a brief summary, and then I'll follow up after her summary of the proposed project. Fantastic.
Good evening again, Chair, Chairman Ashley and commissioners. The second case that you'll be hearing tonight is a project for vesting tentative tract map number 7310, map number 101, proposing to divide 20.11 acre site into 21 lots, ranging in size from 22,032 square feet net to 23,248 square feet net for residential use, a 23,201 square foot net sump lot, and a 2.5 acre drill island, and a request for a waiver of signatures of mineral rights owners in accordance with section 18.15.030K of the Kern County Land Division ordinance. The project site consists of 20.11 acre site located on the southeast corner of Hagaman Road and Red Avenue in the Western Rosedale area. The site is designated urban estate residential by the Western Rosedale specific plan, and is zone A1 limited agriculture with an E5 acres drilling island. It is in suspense pending recordation of the final subdivision map. The site is currently undeveloped. The development in the area includes a single-family residential to the north, east, and west, and agricultural land to the south. Access to the site is proposed to be provided by Hagaman Road, designated as an arterial alignment by the circulation element of the Western Rosedale specific plan via internal local streets. In order to process the tract, the applicant was required to seek approval of a zone change. On December 18th, 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved a zone change classification from DI drilling island to E half on 10,402 square feet of, and from E half to DI on 10,662 square feet, and the zone change case, for zone change case 194, map 101, and the resolution is attached to your staff report. This would be compatible with the surrounding area. The, the zone change would be held in suspense pending recordation of a final subdivision map, which is before you tonight, in order to accommodate a redesign of the proposed map based on the recommendation from the Board of Supervisors hearing. Subsequent to that hearing, the applicant included a drill island as part of the proposal, as approved by the Board of Supervisors, to accommodate both interests of the leaseholders with rights to surface entry, and to allow for the proposed development as well. The proposal was heard before the subdivision review committee on May 29th, 2019, and the committee discussion focused on emergency access easement and related crash gates. Following the discussion regarding the width of the easement and other design issues, a representative from Public Works Department indicated that a minimum width of 40 feet required for public maintenance of the emergency access easement would be required. As a result, the committee determined that the 40-foot wide easement would be required, and the following conditions of approval would be amended to read as follows. Record a public access. Record a public access easement of all subject property for the emergency access 40 feet in width that is in alignment with Spring Crossing Drive to the east per Kern County Land Division subdivision ordinance and the development standards. And in addition, condition seven in will read, obtain approval from the Kern County Fire Department and the Kern County Public Works Department Development Review for emergency access and crash gate and the block wall removal limits. The emergency access crash gate and the block wall would be constructed by the project applicant. Both of these conditions, along with notes on the vesting tentative tract map, ensure that only a 40-foot easement will be constructed for emergency access only, and Spring Crossing Drive will remain a cul-de-sac. Based on the information, it was determined that the surface owner had exhausted all reasonable means for locating possible owners of interest for the mineral rights on the project site, and they were unable to locate where the mineral rights have been sold or transferred. The title company has opined that the mineral rights, including surface rights, run with the land and the applicant and the current owner of record of the underlying mineral rights and the right of surface entry. Staff believes that it can be reasonably concluded that the proposed tract for the Drilling Island will ensure that there can be a future development of the residential area and ensure the mineral rights holders' rights as well on that Drilling Island. And the Drilling Island is being proposed as to accommodate both the leaseholder and be held until such time that the lease is no longer valid. In conclusion, staff believes as condition, the project sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings, and therefore recommends that your commission approve vesting tentative tract number 7310, subject to recommended conditions, approve request for the waiver of signatures of mineral rights holders, adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Chairman Ashley, I'm sorry, I'd just like to add just a few more context to this as well. Ms. Montzabias, if you could put the assessors parcel map from the staff report up. So, your commission may remember, as indicated by Ms. Simon, last year we processed a general plan amendment and zone change, basically to allow half-acre lots, which would match the existing developed homes that are located on the east of the project site. If you can see by this map, Stone River Court is a court and is built as a cul-de-sac. Oak Run Court is a cul-de-sac, is also built as a cul-de-sac. Spring Crossing Drive, when the project, when that tract map was approved, it was intended that it would continue to go access through the property located to the west. When the general plan amendment and zone change came before your commission and the Board of Supervisors, it was identified that staff was concerned having a single point of access, which would be Hagaman Road, was not necessarily sufficient for emergency purposes. So when the general plan amendment and zone change was approved, staff was given direction to consider possible alternatives when the tract map was prepared in terms of providing emergency access to not only the proposed tract that you're considering, but as a secondary means of access for the tract located east of the site. The tract map that has been developed, if Ms. Montzabias can put the proposed tract up there as well, as you can see, are all half-acre lots. The primary, well, the only entrance will come off Hagaman Road. However, there is a proposal to include an easement between two of the lots. The original recommendation, or the original identification, was a 20-foot easement along within a crash gate that would be built by the project applicant, in which if there was an emergency, a standard vehicle, a fire truck, could knock that gate over and people could get in and out. During the subdivision review committee, the discussion took place, and it was determined, if you're going to have an emergency access easement, you might as well make sure that it's going to be big enough to have vehicles go through. So it was the determination at that subdivision review committee that the access should be 40 feet instead of 20 feet. It does include certain standards that would have to be done to where it's traversable when the tract is developed, but again, the intent was to have a 40-foot easement. If your commission takes testimony, I do believe we do have a representative here from the Public Works Department. We can accommodate a 20-foot access easement if that is the desire of your commission. However, it was staff's intent that if the purpose is for emergency services, then might as well make it big enough to where you know for sure that you have that as an option should it be needed. But again, the intent is to have the project applicant, when they construct the tract, to take whatever means are necessary to construct a crash gate approved by the Kern County Fire Department in which they have the keys to, but which also generally could be rammed if and so needed to allow emergency access for both tracks, the one proposed before your commission and the property located on the east of the project site. But I just wanted to provide a little more background in terms of the comments I would anticipate that your commission hears tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So you said the project applicant is here? Would you like to speak on behalf of the project?
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
Leslie Vavilla, I'm with LAV Pinnacle Engineering. We originally designed the track with a street going through because the track next door was supposed to go through. At the original hearing, it was continued and asked that we would redesign to make the neighbors, you know, more accommodate the neighbors with the easement, which we We were kind of stuck in a rock on hearts about here because the neighbors don't want anything, and the planning department, they want something. So an easement is the easiest way to go. The developer actually wanted the street. He gave up the street in place of the easement. So we're just asking that the track finally move forward. It's been a couple of years in the making here, and, you know, we're trying to accommodate everybody, but you can't make everybody happy, so, you know, we're just asking that the track go through.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I had a question. Sorry. What's a standard easement for a project like this? It seems 20 feet's pretty wide. 40 feet, is that really wide?
Um, you know, I think, you know, they talked about a 40-foot for make sure the fire trucks and stuff, but a 20-foot was what we originally put in there because I think that was per the standards. But, you know, our developer agreed to the 40-foot. It took more land out of his lots again, you know, but he just said, you know, if we needed 40-foot, we'll go 40-foot. That way it can be maintained and everything properly, and it can be developed properly, and that was fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Commissioner Giffney, just to provide some additional context, a local street which includes the right-of-way and the sidewalks and everything is 60 feet, but that includes two-way traffic. Just to give context, that's what a local standard is, and that includes the roadways, two lanes of travel, plus then the sidewalks.
I just didn't know if a fire truck needed to go two fire trucks wide or one, because 20 feet's wide enough for a fire truck.
Do we have others wanting to speak on this project?
Hello, Dennis Smithson, I live at the end of what I thought was a cul-de-sac, and it looks like it still will be. The good news is I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to meet us three-quarters of the way halfway on the half-acre lots and eliminating the through street there, so that's to be appreciated. The idea, and I understand the fire department's concern about not having two ways into that development, even putting an exit on Spring Crossing, still, the back half of that development still only has one way out. I mean, you've got areas that are zoned and only have one way out even if the street goes in. The last thing we received in the mail was a 20-foot easement. We thought that was a pretty good middle ground and a good solution for us, and then we found out tonight that that's been increased to 40 feet. I agree with the commissioner's comment, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, that 20 feet seems pretty wide for even the worst fire truck driver, so you could probably make that, I think, be okay. The other issue that was brought up by my neighbors who I love and respect and have been with us through this for day one, is the maintenance issue on that property. Apparently at 40 feet, the county maintains it, at 20 feet, we maintain it. Well, the neighbor across the street from me who's also here, we maintain it now and would continue to do that. On the other side of the fence, that 20 feet of easement, seems like it'd be 10 extra feet of front yard for somebody, and I think they'd probably be willing to mow that, if not I would. So I agree with the, I think the 20-foot easement for a fire truck to get through is plenty, and I don't see an issue with the maintenance. We do it now, would continue it. It's, you know, my preference would be to leave it as it is, and I understand that fires are concerned, and I think the 20-foot easement is a good middle ground that we would be very happy with. Thank you.
Could you tell us your last name again, please?
I'm sorry?
Your last name again, please.
Smithson, S-M-I-T-H-S-O-N.
Thank you, sir. Are there others that would like to comment on the project?
Yes, I'm speaking in regards to this easement on Spring Crossing Drive. My name is Anthony Iafroti. Now, I agree with the gentleman who just spoke as, in regards to the easement from 20 feet. I just read the fine print on the hearing that you guys had on the 29th, increasing it from 20 feet to 40 feet, and that seems quite excessive. On our street itself, I measured it before I came in, and it's the entire street width. You could effectively fit three fire trucks in there side by side. Now, the one worry I have is I know that the builder originally wanted a street to go through there, and it just so happens now that easement is the exact distance of that street. Now, besides that, one other thing that bothers me is, we just moved in a year ago. The people I bought the home from, I know this hearing's been going on for a while for this issue, we just barely found out, and we did pay a lot of money to live in a cul-de-sac. So with this 40-foot easement, and, well, we don't know how big the gate's going to be and the visual aspect of it, but it's going to affect our property value. And that goes for my neighbor as well as myself, and I'm a bit concerned about the future of that and the maintenance, as it's listed, it got increased from 20 to 40 feet for maintenance. I'm sorry, but anyone who's been driving down Rose, when you see somebody filling in some asphalt or what have you, you don't need that much room. As well as the emergency vehicles, if they are crashing through there, we do have children in that cul-de-sac. Now, yeah, there might be sirens going on, but there might not be. So if they crash through that, well, our children are a little bit in danger. And one other thing I wanted to bring up, on Morale Avenue, which is in the neighborhood that they're constructing, they do have a thruway. And honestly, I do not see the need for us to have an emergency access to begin with, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Do we have additional comments on the project?
My name's Joshua Champlin, I'm with Kern County Public Works. I just thought I would get up here and kind of talk to the reasoning. I know Mr. Murphy had talked about the width of the road for emergency vehicles, but in that meeting, it was more so discussed because when we have maintenance on roadways, we have very large equipment. We have motor graders, we have loaders. These things can typically, you know, they're very wide and they need a lot of room for maneuverability. So that's the reason that we asked for 40, and it's in our standards and our standard practices and policies, in our development standards, that 40-foot is the minimum right-of-way or the minimum easement that we'll accept into our maintenance system. So if it's not 40 feet, then the Public Works is really not willing to take this into the maintenance system. This is where the discussion came up, who's going to maintain it? Will it be fire? And fire's not going to maintain it. They will maintain the gate. So that's where the, kind of where the 40 feet came from. It's not an arbitrary number. It's a standard that we follow in all cases. Typically, we want 60 feet. Now, when Ms. Vavilla spoke about, you know, easements, all our roadways are under easement. That's the 60-feet easement, that's what your typical local road is, but we're not asking for that in this case. We are asking for the 40-foot minimum. That's how we establish that. And also, the secondary access is kind of an emergency, and I know there's a standard maximum amount of lots that you can have with one single point of entry, and I think it's a safety issue is why we kind of put that in there, is because if there is some, the road is blocked on that one entry point off of Hagaman, there needs to be another point where people can get in and out. That's why this is kind of set in here into the standard, so that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champlin.
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, Speaker, do you know what the amount of lots triggers a secondary access?
I would leave that to planning, I think that's one of there, but I think it's 50, and there's 80 lots on that side right now. And I believe it's 50 if they're not sprinkled, and I think those predated sprinklers in the homes.
So that would fall within the category of approval of a single entrance?
No, I'm saying if it's more than 50 lots, you have to have more than one entrance.
Yes, that's the way I read it too, but I just wanted to get it from you. Okay, thanks.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dennis Smithson again. In answer to your question, that came up during the last hearing, and we were told at the time that the limit is 100 lots, and we're at 72 in the development, which puts us under, and the lots, this development's been there for four or five years with the one lot, no known problems that we're aware of. Also, as far as the maintenance issue, the applicant told us, and I'm not sure how this works on it, but that the grass would stay, the stuff would stay, so if it's maintenance, I'm thinking the maintenance as who's going to mow the lawn. But if Public Works is talking about putting a street through, you know, obviously I don't have a grader, but, you know, I don't know if the fire trucks only want to drive over the lawn either. So, but when the, in talking to the applicant, who's been very helpful and very nice, but she seemed to indicate that the only thing changed would be a hole in the wall, that they may or may not redo the ramp, they may or may not take out the curb, they will not take out the grass, which seems to me the fire trucks not, that's not going to be, the fire trucks not going to be happy with that, I would, it would seem. That would be my concern also, and then the idea about changing.
I think it's not a roadway for fire trucks, okay? It's an emergency escape route.
Agreed.
So it's not an everyday thing or an every-month thing. It's if you have a fire out there, the fire trucks have to have a secondary access because everybody's going to go back out one way and block the road. That's the reason we put the ordinance in for secondary access. So I'm happy with 20 feet. I mean, I think that's fine, but it doesn't appear that the county would maintain 20 feet, as I just heard from Public Works. So, and we can't depend on the residences there to maintain it, mow the grass and things because we have no guarantee it's going to be done and maintained properly. It really needs to be maintained by the county. So I think you tried to find a common ground staff in Public Works by putting 40 feet on it, but I do think, like what you said, 20 feet is sufficient, but then it becomes a maintenance issue, so you get back to the 40 feet. So I think to guarantee that it's maintained properly and that there's proper access there, like a ladder truck can get through there and things at 40 feet, so I tend to lean to the 40 feet to solve the issue, maintenance as well as access and secondary access through the crash gate. It's not, I wouldn't be concerned about the safety of children and things because, I mean, how often are you going to have a fire in there? It's not, it's not a daily thing, it's not a monthly thing, but if it happens, you want to, you want to, we want to make sure that we've cut it all bases. So, I mean, those are my thoughts.
I understand. The maintenance on our side of the gate would be no problem. Admittedly, I don't know what's, who's going to live in the houses on the other side of the gate. The one on our side is not as sure. We maintain it now, would continue it. You know, assuming that it stays grass, which is what's been alluded to us so far, if it turns into an asphalt thruway, you know, that's not something within my realm to maintain, but what we were told so far is it would stay like it looks now, which is grass.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Public Works to come back up.
Sure. Mr. Champlin, will you come back, please?
Yes, sir.
Hi. State your name for the record, please.
Joshua Champlin.
Yeah, so if we put it at 40 feet, county maintains it? I think that kind of solves some issues, right?
Correct, yes. We will maintain the 40 feet within that easement. I think to speak to their point... to their point, I don't believe that they would be impacted on their side of that crash gate. They wouldn't, that wouldn't be visible through the crash gate. It would just be on the, the new development side. You would have a 40-foot easement. Essentially, it would probably, most likely, it would be, I wanna say, 36 feet of pavement within that 40 feet. And there would be curb and gutter around it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the public works.
Go ahead.
Is there, would there be a way to do a similar thing on the end of Morrow Avenue, the end of the development? So you'd have a crash gate there, and access around the drill island from Rudd Avenue? Is that something that's even possible, or something that could be added to the project?
So in the conditions of approval, I believe there's a temporary turnaround that is conditioned in there. And there was another map I had seen that showed a cul-de-sac that turns to the west at the end, and it's kind of a temporary turnaround. But what this is being set up for is a future development that's gonna be south of that, which will have connectivity. So that road will eventually go through into the next development that comes in.
But that is not owned by the applicant here.
Correct, but similar to the, the previous subdivisions. This is what we do when we're doing land planning, is we wanna get the circulation correct. And so we set it up for future, but for now, there is another drawing somewhere, I've seen it, that has a temporary cul-de-sac in the drill island for now. But I don't know as far as getting traffic back out to Rudd. That's never really been proposed by the applicant for the circulation element of this whole area. It's kind of a regional circulation.
Right. I just saw a secondary, it has a, it has a second access. I didn't know what was coming south of there. Or if there was a way to have that, you know, Morrow Avenue open, you could, you know, put an emergency vehicle through there, have an emergency access to that.
You could, but there's so few lots in this subdivision that it doesn't really warrant it. That's, I think that's where it is. But the, emergency vehicles can turn around in cul-de-sacs, if that's, if that's sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champlin.
Chairman Ashley, if I could just add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things for your final, your commission's final consideration. One of the issues I think we forgot to mention is, part of the reason the track was developed this way, is that Rudd Avenue is the potential future West Beltway. So there's no ability for this project site to take access off of Rudd Avenue. So that, one, is what, one of the limitations are. Similar to the issue we have right now, to say, well, this one doesn't need it, because it'll get its secondary access when the development happens to the south, really just says, this issue that we did here, let's just move it down here, and now they're gonna have to deal with it in the future. So we're trying to resolve this as best we can. For, you know, we would like 40 feet. At the subdivision review committee, I specifically asked, if the commission decided that 20 is appropriate for the neighborhood, can the departments live with it? The answer was yes, but then it was just clear that it's not maintained by the county. And the reason when we had this discussion is, hey, if it's maintained by the county, we need a cer, certain standard. And we said 40 would be what we would do. If it's your commission's desire to allow a 20, that is completely fine. It was just important to note then that it's not being maintained by the county. The crash gate will be developed, it'll be built, but any, the, the access to it, and so things, the really response is on all of the residents to make sure that it's maintained in such a manner that it serves as a crash gate. So, again, we could live with it, if it's your commission's desire, but we prefer having the 40-foot that makes it to where county maintains it, and then we know for sure that it's guaranteed for, for overall access.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I guarantee you that it won't be maintained properly, like the county would maintain it properly. So my recommendation is, let's go with the 40 feet. The county maintains it, and we know we have a nice, clean subdivision and secondary access solution, and protects the neighborhood. If you put 20 feet in, it's, it's like a some lot that has good intentions with the developer, that there's gonna be an association form, that everybody pays into it. The residents there aren't gonna do that with the neighborhood. So I think 40 feet is really the correct answer here, and let, and let it be maintained by the county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But those are my thoughts.
We have another speaker, it looks like. Please come forward, say your name.
My name's Caitlin Huntington, and I live on the very end of Spring Crossing. And we are comfortable with 20 feet. Our concern with 40 feet is that we actually have some relatives who spent years and years and years at a house on a cul-de-sac next to a lot. And they, when they developed the lot next door, they were told that your street would not be a thru street, that they were gonna put up a gate for emergencies. So they did, and what ended up happening was, they got a gate with a paved road, and then they spent another, I don't know, five to 10 years trying to keep that gate there. And they ultimately lost. And now they have their house that they've lived at for 20 years is a main thoroughfare through to the new neighborhood. So we are comfortable with 20 feet. Our concern is that 40 feet is kind of their stepping stone into being able to blow out this gate and make a thru street like they originally intend, intended. So I, I feel that if you were to approve the 20 feet, we wouldn't have that fear. And it would really, really put our minds at ease to have strictly 20-foot. And I would even go as far as to say, as the street at the end of Morrow, if they're talking about having that as a temporary cul-de-sac, I don't know if it's possible to put in as a disclosure when that lot sells, that that's gonna be a thru street eventually, because these are half-million-dollar homes. And we went way, way, way above budget to stay in a cul-de-sac. We have young kids in the neighborhood. People like to be in cul-de-sacs. And it's just not fair at all to sell these houses with the appearance of a permanent cul-de-sac, and then be like, oh, surprise, it's actually already always been intended to go through. It's just not.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify something for the speaker.
Sure.
It's an easement, it's not a street.
I understand that.
It's an area that the fire trucks can use secondary access for in case of an emergency there.
Right. And we also have-
It's not gonna turn into a street. It's an easement for an access.
We have an easement on our lots as well. And when we bought our lot, we were going to build a pool house in the back. And we were told that we cannot even build on that easement. We had to build 20 feet over, because if, worst-case scenario, they needed access to our land, they need, they can drill through our building if we were to build on the easement. So it's just hard to believe that they wouldn't have the ability to bust through this easement and put a street like was originally intended. It's just, we don't have the peace of mind of that at all. So that, those are our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huntington.
Any other comments?
Good evening. My name's Mike Ray. Last name spelled R.A.E. I am a resident on Spring Crossing Drive. And first of all, I'd like to say, I've attended several of these planning meetings in the past, and I think that everybody's done a very good job in meeting many, many of our needs. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for that. On the easement, the thing that I don't quite understand, will that easement be paved, or just gonna be dirt? Would it be, would the easement be paved or dirt?
Chairman Ashley, I can somewhat answer that, and then we can have public works. If it's 40 feet-
No, no.
No, no, I'm just, if it's a 40-
Yeah, but if it's 20 feet, would it be paved, or would it be dirt?
If it's a 40-foot easement that is maintained by the county, we can dictate the standards. If it is a 20-foot easement, then we can say that it has to be kept free and clear. But we do not have the ability to specify what it ultimately will be as it goes forward. We also don't have, or we had the concern that if it's only 20 feet, depending if it's paved, whatever it is, if a car parks in front of it, all of a sudden, they may be visiting somebody in the neighborhood, now their car is there, you know, that was part of the reason 20 to 40. But if it's 40, we know for sure what it'll be. If it's 20, the developer will, will make, construct it in such a manner where it's traversable. And then ultimately, it'll be on all the property owners in the neighborhood, just to know, it's an emergency access easement, please don't do anything with it, don't put rocks in it. You know, it does have to be kept clear and free, and that's what the, the track map will require. But there's nothing that specifies that says, it must be this, and this, and that, and so forth.
So on the, the new development, it would not necessarily be paved? It would just be left free and open?
Are we talking, well-
So from-
If it's a 40-foot easement, if it's, we know, we know exactly what the conditions will be. If it is a 20-foot, the developer will construct the gate, they'll construct it, make sure that it's traversable. But then, once the property sold, now you have a property owner that all they're subject to is the language in the easement that says it shall be maintained and kept clear and free.
Okay. So if it's at 20 feet, it won't be paved by, it won't be paved, it'll just be an open easement on the other side?
Well, it could be paved.
It could be, or?
Up, up to the developer.
How would we know that? I mean, I think that's a big, big deal, because here's the thing, is that those homes are gonna be $700,000, $800,000 homes, okay? That's what they are on the other side. And that easement's 20 feet wide, and this is the, this is the line, and I have 10 feet on this side, and there's 10 feet on this side, then you've gotta maintain that extra 10 feet of grass, I gotta maintain this at 10 feet of grass. Let me tell you, if you've gone through that neighborhood, having your gardener mow an extra 10 feet of grass is not gonna make one difference in the entire world.
Chairman Ashley, I'm sorry. It definitely would not be grass, because then it doesn't look like an easement. It looks like an extensions of someone's yard.
That's why I was-
It will be rock, crushed granite, some sort of roadway that is specified that leads to the crash gate.
Okay, so it would be like-
Correct. It would not be the two properties abut each other, and their grass just extends all the way, because then it does not give the appearance of an easement. If you were going through it, it would appear that you're driving through someone's lawn. Now, there would be a dedicated travelway. Now, the question is whether it's 40 feet or 20 feet. If it's 20 feet, it still has to be traversable by a standard car, and it would not be grass, or it'd have anything along those lines. But then we just don't maintain it, if that is the, the standard.
So if it's rock, it would, if they're saying, if it's not asphalt, it'd have to be rock. And then it'd be 10 feet on each people's side. And once again, $700,000 house, and I have 10 feet of rock there, I guarantee you that the weeds would be pulled out, you know? I mean, that's, it just seems like, why make it so much bigger when you don't need to? When the neighbors, when you figure it's just 10 feet on each side, it's obviously dedicated. And like you said, sir, that, that, God willing, that never, no one's ever gonna go down that road and knock it over. So it's not gonna get used hardly ever. And then by having a 20 feet, there's a less chance that it would ever be developed for some sort of a reason, if you wanna say that. And I, and also, there's, it hasn't been brought up tonight, but on, I think it's Thistle Court, Thistle Sage Court on the other side of this development, there is a gate for firemen over there, too. So there is, is a, an actual, ex, access for fire on the other side. So I think a 20-foot would be fine. Everybody here would be happy. I don't think it would be a problem for the other people. And I think it would be a, a great thing.
The only problem we-
But I think you guys all did a great job, and I, I'm really happy myself.
The only problem we got is maintenance, and-
But I'm saying, 10 feet of maintenance on those homes-
I'm telling you that you're gonna have hot scotch weeds and everything else between-
Could it be-
Going down, I mean, it's, if they're willing to, to service it and maintain it on 40 feet, and they won't come to 20 feet, then it doesn't work.
Could it be similar to the alleys like in the city of Bakersfield, where they have alleyways like that, where they do have those access lanes in various parts of the city, but they're not 40 feet? Obviously, they're, they're 20 feet. There's numerous ones of those throughout the city. Could it be something like that?
Well, public works is telling us.
Well, I'm saying-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to go through YouTube.
Sure, sorry.
Public works tells us that they won't maintain it unless it's at least 40 feet. So anything below 40 feet, if I'm correct, in what I heard, you know, it's, it's kind of a rough issue to make a decision on, unless it's 40 feet at this point, because the people that own property in there are not gonna maintain it all the way through that easement.
I don't think that's necessarily the case. I mean, there's plenty of alleyways and accessways throughout the city where people maintain them, or not 40 feet.
Yeah, but you can't guarantee that'll happen.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would like to, Mr. Chairman, ask Ms. Villila to come back up.
Please.
Since she's the one that-
Okay, sir.
Was planning this. Is there any alternatives, after you've heard this testimony, to secondary access issues here that we could implant into this tract, other than denying it?
Meaning if, if we do a 20-foot easement, I mean-
Well, 20 feet isn't gonna maintain it, so-
Right. They're not gonna maintain it.
It's either you form an association of all the property owners and charge them for maintaining the easement, or denying it, or put 40-foot easement in. Those are the, those are the-
We're just saying, put the 40-foot easement in. You know, we've already been conditioned. I mean, if you read, if you look in the conditions, they talked about, you know, the sidewalk, the curb and gutter that had to go in there, the, the radius of the curb and gutter that needed to go in there, and, I, I mean, the original development, you know, he accepted the fact that a street was going through there, and he thought it was giving up 60 feet. You know, then it went down to, we're gonna go 20 feet. Now it's back up to 40 feet. Yeah, I, we just, you know, a 40-foot easement is not gonna affect the track in the sense that it's gonna change a whole lot. I, I doubt if it'll ever get used. It'll be some paved road with some sidewalk and curb and gutter running through there that the fire trucks can go in and, if they need it. But I seriously doubt if it'll ever get, you know, like you said, it's not a daily occurrence. And at some point in time, I mean, those are $700,000 houses. I would think at some point, they would want the fire trucks to come in there if there's a problem. They're not gonna be complaining if the fire truck actually shows up. They're just complaining that it might show up on a day that they don't want it to show up. So I, I'm, you know, I don't know what, how to please them, other than, you know, we have to have an easement, we have to have something. If they put a 20-foot easement in there, then my developer will have to put some sort of stipulation on the lots that they have to maintain it. Can he guarantee that be maintained?
No.
No. Does he put a stipulation when they buy the lot? He's gonna have to disclose it as it is, that there's an easement there that must be maintained and must be free and clear. Everybody, if you look at any house, there's usually easements on, you know, there's public access easements and all kinds of stuff on them. People just don't realize it, that they have an easement on their property. However, this is gonna be an obvious easement. And, you know, if, if the, the county wants it maintained like the street, you know, cleaned and, and weed-free, then it has to be a 40-foot easement. My developer says, if that's what it needs to be, that's what it needs to be. If it needs to be a 20, he'll probably have to put some disclosure out there that it has to be maintained. And whoever buys those two lots will be responsible for maintaining it. But he can't guarantee that, 'cause he'll build a house, and he'll go on to some other development.
Okay, thank you.
You will.
Thank you, Ms. Villila.
I have a question for Mr. Phil-
I do, Mr. I-
Our attorney, or Mr. Murphy. Go ahead.
Okay, 'cause I have a potential just solution.
Okay.
We got Mr. Iafroti, I think it wants to speak one more.
Let's hear it.
As I had mentioned before, the thought was 40 feet is appropriate. Clearly, if 20 feet is the issue, again, I asked the question, 20 feet can work. What I would recommend, based on this discussion, is that condition J be revised to read, record a public access easement of all subject property for emergency access, 20 feet in width, that is in alignment with Spring Crossing Drive to the east. Per the Kern County Land Division ordinance and development standards, the access shall be continually maintained and traversable by a standard vehicle. And there, a note should be placed on the track map indicating that no parking from the property owners should be done. And I believe that that will help to address the concerns. It has to be maintained, it's traversable. Again, one of the concerns with 20 feet, someone could use it as a driveway. All of a sudden, you have your RV there, there's an emergency, cars are trying to get out, and RV's there instead. But with that condition, with the note on the track map for those two lots, that it should not be, it needs to be maintained, and it should not be used for parking purposes. Again, I believe staff could live with that recommendation.
How, how do you enforce and maintain the maintenance, if that's the case?
Just as we would any other property that someone has an easement. It's up to the property owners.
You put it on there, but we're not gonna police it. The county doesn't have the staff to police it, to see if it's properly maintained.
Commissioner Sprague, it would be just the neighborhood knowing that there's an emergency access easement. There would be a crash gate there. It would be developed to where it was clear what the purpose of it was for. Again, the applicant can pave it, and then make it like, look like a driveway, but it just needs to be continually free. I have seen similar access easements that have been done that way for utilities, or something along those lines. There's an access for utility to kind of travel through there. But that is one potential recommendation.
I'm, I, I can see that as a possibility, but I, I, I'm reluctant, because those easements never get maintained properly and evenly from one end to the other. You know, people let weeds grow, they plant gardens in there, they park their RVs on there, things like that. So I mean, there has to be provisions put in, in a condition that guarantees that that, that thoroughfare is gonna be- thoroughfare is going to be maintained and accessible by emergency vehicles, and there has to be some hatchet that makes that happen. So, I don't know how you condition that to happen unless you form an association and tax everybody for fees to make sure it's maintained by someone from one end to the other. I was just about to ask our legal counsel here as to how we would tackle that situation with a solution.
Chairman, if I may, I've got to say, I'm a little perplexed as how forty-foot becomes something that Public Works will maintain, but twenty is not. Not exactly sure where that standard would be under that. We wouldn't maintain any of our bike paths. So, I mean, really, what this seems to want to be and what it needs to be is a simple walkway between here that would measure less than twenty feet, but enough for a vehicle to crash through the gate and use it if it needed to, and any other time somebody's going to look at it, it's a sidewalk that connects the two developments. I'm kind of perplexed as to where we've gotten here and how forty feet, twenty feet, and all this other stuff, and who's going to maintain it when a sidewalk of fifteen feet, any truck could go across and still have space on each side? So, maybe to meet everybody's expectations, a continuance is needed here.
Mr. Chairman?
We have one more, one more comment, or I know that for a fact, so why don't we hear from Mr. Alfredi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your name for the record again, if you don't mind.
My name is Anthony I. Friday. Now, as a farmer, and I do side contracting for excavation, land leveling and ripping, I do know about maintenance and how big the equipment is. One thing I was under the assumption would be this easement going from Spring Crossing over to Moreau Avenue, I believe it is called. I assume that both sides would have a crash gate, that it wouldn't be an open road, because that neighborhood, if we have a crash gate on that side, all those homes are just going to use that for parking, and it's just going to be a parking lot, and it's not going to be there for emergency access. If it's open, the people are going to use it. And as for the twenty feet, if it's only used for emergency access vehicles, then there shouldn't be much maintenance needed at all. It's going to be a rare occasion. Now, even if it's unpaved, which it sort of boggles my mind, like a couple of you said here, I don't see the difference between having it paved between twenty feet or forty feet now. But even if it was just dirt or maybe some gravel, you wouldn't have any maintenance, nothing that would require forty feet. So, I would like you to keep that in mind, as I think it's a little bit unnecessary for what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Alfredi.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
I have a question, just as far as the street on Spring Crossing, would that have to be a red-curbed area though as well, the end of the cul-de-sac?
Commissioner McGiffney through the chair. It is the intent that, on the other side, on the Spring Crossing, the sidewalk would probably have to be reconstructed to where it was a ramped location. Again, when that development was built, for whatever reason, it was clear on all the properties it was supposed to go through, they built it as a cul-de-sac, which was fine, and the intent was, when it ever got built, then those cul-de-sacs go away and it becomes a straight street. Knowing the direction the board was hoping us to go to figure out a solution to this issue, this is where we had come up with. But there is a possibility that, yes, on that backside, that those curbs would have to be a ramp so that a vehicle could traverse up of it.
Any more questions or comments?
I want to, Mr. Chairman, I want to get back to Public Works again. I have a question. You state your name for the record, please.
Joshua Champlin.
We seem to be hung up between twenty and forty here, and I'm wondering why Public Works couldn't make a waiver solution for this to maintain the twenty feet, instead of us having to go to forty feet and resolve, and make a solution, resolve the problem.
I can say, I'm probably not the person to, that would be our director Craig Pope's decision. It wouldn't lie with me. That would be something he would have to make the call on.
Okay.
It's within our Public Works design and development standards that the minimum right-of-way that we accept is forty feet, and so that's all I can speak to today.
Thank you very much. Then, I'm kind of leaning towards a continuance and having the developer and their agents work with Public Works to try to get a waiver on the forty-foot down to twenty-foot for maintenance to guarantee that that area is going to be maintained properly, and there's still access for emergency vehicles there. If that could be done, then we'd have a solution to the problem. So, if we continued it, I think maybe they can come up with something that works. I mean, those are my thoughts of what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague.
We have Public Works again up front.
Sure, Mr. Champlin.
Joshua Champlin. Mr. Sprague through the chair. I think that's a very small chance that Mr. Pope grants that. From where I've been and spending years in maintenance, I don't think that's going to happen. I did want to address how, you had asked about how can the twenty feet be enforced? Within Public Works, we have a code compliance division. So, how that would work is, it would rest on the rest of the community. When somebody saw a violation, they would have to call that into code compliance, and we send a code compliance officer out there to address the situation, and that's how that would be handled.
Let me interrupt you. How many code compliance officers do you have?
We have five.
Okay. Countywide?
Five.
Countywide, it doesn't work.
Okay.
They can't spread themselves. I deal with code of compliance with the county all the time. I know what their capabilities are, I know that something small like this isn't going to get a second look.
Okay, I was just giving you, that's how it would be.
So, I'm just telling you, that solution isn't going to work.
Okay.
Okay?
But that's how it would, that's the only method that I see from a Public Works position that could hope to address a privately maintained easement.
I say if we don't ask, we don't get, and we should continue it for a couple of weeks and have the applicant deal with Public Works, Mr. Pope, the director, and see if we can get some solution to this and come back to this plan commission and with some type of solution for secondary access.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's no more comments or questions, so we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period on it. We have a recommendation for Commissioners Sprague. Other Commissioners, what do you think?
I think it's pretty obvious that the developer is willing to do whatever to make this work, and so I'd hate to continue this even further down the road. It might just, I don't know if Mr. Murphy has any additional comments, but based off of our restraints, I think we need to choose twenty feet or forty feet. We put our faith in the residents with twenty feet, or we put our faith in the county with forty feet.
Thank you, Laura. Greg, you have any comments?
Well, I just think the existing residents have, you know, have a little more step, they're established, and it's a larger community, and it seems like they were comfortable twenty feet, and, you know, I want to do the will of the people more than anything else, not necessarily the will of the Public Works people, but people there, if they're able to deal with that, it might work. And I just don't, I just still have a question of why they couldn't do a similar access to the city of Bakersfield, alleyways and things that are not that wide, and they have access and they maintain them, or if the easement's there, they could do a sidewalk thing, like, as long as it's clear, you know, that there's an easement, then you could do even a sidewalk thing where it's demonstrated to be emergency access or things like that. So, I guess I'm, there's got to be some other way to make everybody happy with this. So, I'd like, I'd like to continue it, if not just ask the question, why can't we do what we want to do? That would be, one more question couldn't hurt, and come back in two weeks and answer that.
I would have to agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner McGiffney.
One more statement?
I'm sorry, we already closed the public comment period, sorry about that. Mr. Murphy, you have any further comments, or Mr. Hall?
Chairman, Ashley, I do not.
Okay, so we have, I'm also against continuance of this. Obviously, this project's been in the works for a really long time. We're at a stalemate here in terms of what we're thinking. I do want this to work for everyone. I think I've got some confidence that the people sitting in front of us are going to help maintain that. I also have pretty high confidence that you might not live there forever, and so you're, there's no way to guarantee that in perpetuity. So, we've got to figure out how this is going to work. We're not going to know unless we ask. I think we could require you guys to do a paved road in there, that would be easier to maintain, but again, there's no guarantee forever that that's going to happen that way. So, I would agree to a continuance with a finite span on there, but this, yeah, not happy about it, but I would agree with that.
Chairman Ashley, this issue is a little bit different than the item before you, before the previous item.
Yep.
If it is your intent to continue this, I would just recommend a two-week continuance, because I do believe that we can work with Public Works, get an answer, and bring the item back within the two weeks, as opposed to waiting an entire month, if that is your commission's desire to continue the project.
Okay. So, I will entertain motions at this point.
I would make a motion that we continue it for two weeks, and hopefully Public Works comes around and says, yeah, we'll do the twenty, and everybody walks away happy.
That would be a continuance to June 27th. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay. I think that concludes our meeting for the evening.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.[1674.97]